Getting ready to open the workshop up, please, if you'll have a seat. It is five o'clock and we're gonna start. At this time, the citizens have the opportunity to make comments to the council. As usual, if you'll please limit your comments to three minutes. Keep yourself, language, all that good stuff supposed to be appropriate for us, if you don't mind. So at that time, since we are now in session, first one on here is Scott. Your turn up.
All right, so thank you, Dr. Moser. So, yes, we worked in collaboration with the Parks and Recreation Committee to come up with a proposed parks curfew. So, right now, our parks, public parks do not have a curfew that we can enforce. So, the proposed parks curfew, like I said, I came up with this draft. Sat down with the Parks and Recreation Committee and went over it. We discussed a lot more things that are not part of a parks curfew. That later we may propose to the council or not. But tonight, we're here to seek your direction on this proposed curfew. So, I'm proposing this curfew. The parks curfew, the ordinance number that is listed on the ordinance would fit in line with our current ordinance. It's kind of where in place it was. And the parks curfew is three bullet points. It simply says, A, there is established curfew for all public parks in the city limits from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. During this period, no one may use the public parks of the city for any purpose except as provided in provision B of this ordinance. So, then provision B is, an exception may be obtained to this curfew by submitting a request for an exception of writing to the city manager or his designate. And then C, bullet point C, or subsection C says, is the penalty for violating the curfew, which is a person violating provision A of this ordinance shall be guilty of a class D misdemeanor, as defined in the Texas Penal Code, and will be subject to a fine not exceeding $500, which is the limit of a class D misdemeanor. So, that is our proposed curfew to the city council. And basically, I'm here for the discussion of, to seek guidance. And as well as the Parks and Recreation Committee, does the city council agree with this curfew? Do we need to tweak it and basically get guidance? Is it good, or do we need to modify it? If it is, no modifications are needed, then we would like to bring it to the next council meeting for actual approval, discussion and approval.
I just have a question. Do we need to define public parks of the city?
Yes, so most, yeah, yeah. So, to answer your question, most places do define the public parks. And the reason for that is, we don't have any yet, thankfully, but you never know if we would in the future. But such as like City of Temple and City of Belton and other places, even outside the cities, that have community parks, like HOA parks, they don't define those as public parks if they're only accessible to HOA members. Now, if they're not, they would fall under the deem of a public park. So, if you didn't have to have a, like a membership card or a code as a resident to get into it, then it would deem as a public park because it is accessible to the public.
You say Anse Park, Smith Park?
No. And I would defer to Neil on that, but I would say, no, because the public park is any accessible. I mean, it is kind of defined clearly already, but I would defer to Neil on that.
So, green easements wouldn't be misconstrued as a public park?
Any questions on that?
So, Matt, I did have somebody reach out to me this week and ask me a couple of questions about something.
Yeah.
Talking about Oakmont Park? That's a core lease, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, is that actually technically our public park?
Yes and no. So, the portion that, where the swing sets are, is my understanding, and you have to get into a little bit more. But the section where the swing sets exist today in the little sandbox area, that section was originally, if I'm not mistaken, as a city park, established as a city park. Now, everything to the left side of that, basically the edge of that, is the Corps of Engineers. And then across the cove, when you come into the park onto the left-hand side, is Corps of Engineers. I believe that's part of our lease as well, even though there's nothing over there.
The conversation was, how come we keep locking up Oakmont Park? And I was like, no?
Yes, and I'll give you the answer. The answer to that is because the Corps of Engineers established that that, the entrance to the park belongs to the City of Morgan's Point Resort, does not belong to the Corps of Engineers. And so, the Corps of Engineers says the city can do as it wishes with the entrance to the park.
Okay, good answer.
I think that'll do it. Any more questions?
Yeah.
I have a quick question on that. So, with those parks, what about, like this park right here, there's no gates to lock. It will still be off limits at 11:00 p.m.?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're just supposed to sign that, says?
Yes, we have, yeah. Ordinance signs would be posted at all the parks. Our suggestion would be that we post the ordinance signs at all parks, so that it is aware in the hours that the ordinance applies. And then, but yes, essentially, that is the same, even though they're not physically restricted, their imaginary boundary restricted.
Just out of curiosity, why do you want to lock up the public parks? Why do you want to deny us access to the public parks? Has there been a problem traditionally, historically?
So, yes, so we always, so anything generally in law enforcement, criminal malfeasance always takes place. And it doesn't always take place at a park, but parks usually do not have anything going on good in law enforcement outside of the daytime hours. And so, in your last strategic, sorry, in your last, in your most recent strategic planning session, you all said that public parks was something that you wanted to put a lot of money into. And you've already put a lot of money into public parks now with addition of this park, Cypress Park here, and the upgrades or the repairs that you're making to Anse Park. Now, some of those repairs, keep in mind, might have been due to overtime and things like that. But a lot of that stuff that we put in the money so far has been to vandalism and criminal mischief and destructiveness from activity that is not normal use of the parks. And so, usually, those do not occur during the daytime hours. A lot of that occurs at nighttime where they can get, when criminals can get away by hiding over the cover of darkness. So, that's why we want to put that ordinance in there.
How about those of us that want to go down there and just watch the lake at midnight, or take photography of the stars, or do whatever we want to do at midnight? Is that criminal activity?
No.
Did you deny me that access to a public park because of potential?
No, and that's the discussion that we also had with the Parks and Recreation Committee. With the Parks and Recreation Committee, we covered all kinds of bases such as that. The thing, just like anything else, just like anything else as law enforcement officers, we have discretion up to a certain point. Some things we do not have discretion on. But the things that we do have discretion on, such as things like this, as a park curfew, we take what's called the totality of the circumstances. Now, if Mr. Kloon was just coming to the park because he'd had a bad day and he's sitting on the swing enjoying the park at midnight, again, while you might be violating this by the letter of the law, there is the spirit of the law that follows that. So, the officer has the discretion, and we would encourage the officer, and it would be our direction, that the officer take into account the totality of the circumstances, which means that if Mr. Kloon was just sitting on the park bench enjoying it because he had a rough night, this is not what this ordinance is intended for. While you might be violating it by the letter of the law, this spirit of the law is not what that's for.
If the gate's locked, then you'll need to park your car and walk in, I guess, Oakmont.
To like Oakmont.
We're still wondering why we have to walk to the park.
Yeah, I'm saying that, yeah.
But that was something that came out of the COVID experience, and like a lot of things, hasn't been rescinded. We've had the parks open for, one day, City Incorporated, 75, something like that. And we haven't had this massive influx of criminal activity. We had to lock up all of our public parks.
It also says an exception may be obtained.
So, I want to write a letter to the city manager and say, I want to go out at 10:00 p.m. and take a picture of the moon?
Or, you know, the month of, whatever your terms you want it to be.
I want it to be open.
Okay, well, then I would request that the city manager.
I would request that we take a look at it and make sure it's not taking away public property and access to public property because of the potential for criminal activity. The only way you're gonna know I'm in the park, taking a refresher break at midnight, is you're cruising through.
Right.
You'll go over there twice as often as you do now, and maybe you won't have as much criminal activity.
And that's a good point, but the problem is, is we can't be everywhere all at one time, right? So, and so the criminal activity can occur in the periods that we just went through and we just left.
Well, they knew you were coming.
Do we want any parks, any particular parks potentially like Oakmont to be an exception to this? It's all parks except Oakmont? I'm just asking.
So, we talked about, we talked about different times, different things like that. And it became more of a, of an issue trying to manage times and managing different parks for different reasons. As a whole of, you know, if we're trying to, again, you're gonna invest a lot of money. And I don't know if your strategic plan, again, caused for you to invest money in Oakmont Park. I wasn't, I don't remember if that was the case. But if that's something that you're talking about investing in, you're gonna want to make sure that that investment is secure for as long as you can be from criminal activity. And, you know, make sure your investment is protected for your citizens' use and visitors' use for as long as possible, right? And that's just one step in the process, again.
Yeah, if you're still taking away public access to public property for the potential of criminal activity, you can take that and extend it out to a whole lot of things. And that is an infringement on citizens' rights.
Okay, y'all want to, this discussion could go on for an hour. We've got a lot of stuff to do today here. Do you want to look at this at another time? What do y'all want to do on this? But we can't spend an hour on this.
We're just trying to compromise.
Yeah.
That's why I said, can we exclude?
Yeah, I want to do that. I mean, it looks like we did try to do something.
Trying to offer positivity.
Just one more consideration, looking at a curfew. I have a neighbor who lives just on the other side of the marina. And there was people here at 10:00, 11:00, 12:00 o'clock at night in the park, playing tennis. Or they weren't even being criminal, they were just noisy, and she couldn't sleep. So, she complained to me about it. So, there's kind of a balance there with finding the noise, noise levels and things like that, too.
And again, and again, keep in mind, I think Dr. Moser can touch on this. After we met with them, I believe their members had reached out to their neighbors, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, their neighbors, and reached out to them for their input on it. And as far as I can tell, and he'll be able to speak more, everybody was in support of this, as far as.
Everyone at Parks and Rec or all the neighbors?
Neighbors as well.
Okay.
I think I only spoke about 90 seconds. Still think I have.
I'm sorry, while we're discussing, I can't accept anything from the floor. So, I will get with you in a moment. I will get with you in a moment.
And Mr. Kloon, I think you have some excellent ideas on that as far as taking away access. But one of the things, these ordinances weren't original. We didn't come up with these. These came from, we looked at Belton, Colleen, Harker Heights. I believe this one, the language was from Harker Heights. So, this isn't, there's a lot of precedent, precedent as far as ordinances with city parks and closing for the purpose of vandalism. And I understand your position as far as what proof do we have to close it down? You know, is there vandalism in the parks? And Chief can speak on that as far as previous vandalism. And I would say all public spaces, you know, have been around for a long time. But it gets to the point between growth and vandalism that you start looking at protecting, protection of the citizens as well. And again, I go back to the original discussion was centered around that nothing, nothing good happens after midnight, so.
Ever done any astrophotography?
Have I?
Can I do that?
No.
No. It works really good at noon.
Yeah. But no, not a photographer.
Well, that's something that can happen after.
But I can have a lot of pictures of my grandkids.
Or there might be another place that's in the county that you might be able to look. You know, somewhere in the county that maybe doesn't have. Rogers Park? I mean, I love Rogers Park, and I do not believe that's a city park. I think that's Corps of Engineers, right?
Yes.
So, hopefully, we can.
Okay, Elliot. Thank you, Matt. We appreciate that. And thanks, sir.
Well, the question I have, Mayor, City Council, is something you want us to bring back or not?
Well, I thought we were.
Well.
No, yeah, it was, it was, do you agree with the proposed ordinance? Do we need to modify it? We need, I need some direction. If there's no modifications, then we would propose to bring it back.
And if you want more time, we can come back next meeting and have another, you know, follow up on it, so you give you some time to think about it.
Is it on this agenda?
No.
No, 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 no. We're just trying to get a consensus. What do you want us to do? Do you want to drop it? Do you want to go down the road?
I don't want to drop it. I think Parks and Rec, I think we need to respect that they've spent a lot of time. Matt has spent a lot of time. He's got a lot of experience. I think we need to address it.
And then, and then future discussions on other, other things to help keep our parks secure, we'll go through with Parks and Recreation as well, and we will get guidance from how y'all, how the city council and the citizens think, you know, we should secure your investments or their investments.
So, Mayor, what we're looking for is a consensus, if we can get that.
Okay, I say we discuss it and move forward on Sunday. Yeah, I agree.
And Mayor, we got a consensus. I was counting the numbers there, so.
We'll take it from there then.
We'll bring it back.
We'll bring it back. Thank you, Matt. Okay, Andrew, I'm sorry, I didn't get you.
First, I want to thank you, the police. They are doing a great job. I'm living next to Oakmont Park, and they are closing it, and they are very generous. They are not right there at sundown. They actually wait until people kind of trundle out of the park or search them or what. But it is wonderful when there is a curfew. No little fires at night that you see from the patio. No people at 2:00 o'clock in the morning deciding to speed down to the parks because the dog has to run around or whatever. Please, that's a reasonable curfew. I hope you look at it favorably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am. Going on to discussion 25-014. Nadia?
Nida Santana. We were approached by Brian Snyder. He is the city administrator in Harris County of the City of Morgan's Point. He is requesting that City of Morgan's Point Resort write a letterhead requesting that we relinquish rights to City of Morgan's Point. They're trying to go through the United States Postal System to get a name, place, designation. So, what that allows them to do is they also share a zip code with another city, which is very similar to what we do. So, at some point, somebody put the two together. When they tried to apply, they got denied because the two cities are also combined. They get a lot of calls, they get a lot of traffic within the two. So, they are wanting to request and see if we will write a letterhead saying that we are separate, the City of Morgan's Point Resort, and we're not the City of Morgan's Point. The United States Postal System is gonna need that, so they can move forward in their actions.
And the key is, it's not our city's name, so there's no sense in having it on the application, tying it up for another city. There's no objections, then we'll go ahead and remove it, but it's just one of those things, just FYI.
And it's your next under authorization?
Yes, sir.
Pardon? Yeah, for B.
Yes, Mayor, Council. DS 25015 deals with the Horizon Bank Authorization, signing the checks, if you will. Right now, we've got a new finance director. I'll go ahead and give you her name. Her name is Mary Tolman.
Mary?
And Mary is, first focus she had during interview as well as, since she's been here, is internal controls. We have so many check signing going on right now, there's about eight of us, I think, total. It's not good for internal controls. And whenever someone signs a check, it's not just an activity you're doing, it's also a financial decision. And it's something that the person signing needs to understand the purpose of the expenditure and how it relates to the overall organization policies and what have you. So, it's not a good idea to be signing a check in a vacuum and not really knowing all of it, because you won't get it all off of that one, off the supporting documents you see before you. My recommendation is, is to point primaries and alternates. Primary should be the finance director and the city manager. Alternates, I've asked both parties, and they've agreed, both Catrice Jackson and Nida Santana to be the alternates. It will provide better control. It will provide continuity from whether someone's gone or not. There's gonna be plenty of people there. So, unless there's an objection, we would like to get that changed. And that's what you're gonna be seeing in the regular session for that action item.
Yeah, in the past, my understanding was that a councilperson signed off on the checks. And I remember Ronnie Snow, when we first came on, he stood up and he said, it's real important that you guys do your turn in reviewing invoices at least, you know, once a month, so that you understand what's going on in the city. I am happy to get off the signature card. So, I'm not suggesting that we do, but we're gonna have to get some financial information. So, we know what's going on in the city.
Yeah, we've got that coming for you tonight. And there's a, we've talked about this before, but I'll talk about it a little bit more when that item comes up on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the next, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, I'm done with that one.
Matt, I guess, are you doing a guest? Just explain. This is item 25016. You're up.
All right, I'm gonna make this real simple. We applied for a grant when Urien was our interim city manager. It was a justice, it's a JAG grant, and we apply for it just about every year since I've been chief. When Urien was here, we have, we have to do a resolution for each of these grants that says that the city council authorizes said city manager or person to enter into the grant or apply for the grant. At that time, it was Urien because he was our interim. They have since gone through the award process and to get the actual money for reimbursement, once we spend it, they are requesting that we redo the resolution with our current city manager's name on it. It's very, very simple, just a change of a name on it.
Any problem on that?
Oh, and I believe the, we also, they requested that the resolution change the amount because we applied for, let's just say, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, let's just say $32,000. But that's not what we actually got awarded. We got awarded $14,000 and some change. So, they requested that we update that with our award amount and then Dennis's name, sir. So, that's what we did.
Any problem with that, anybody? Thanks, sir, we'll get it taken care of.
Yep.
Next one, the discussion item 25017, Camille. City planning?
Okay, is referencing to accept as well as the name.
Okay, next item will be, Sam, you suggest the section, chapter 14, section 23 on the zoning?
Yeah, afternoon. So, this was presented at the last city council meeting as well. And this is revisions to the City of Morgan's Point Resort Code of Ordinances, chapter 14, section 23 and 24. And did provide a summary of the changes that the P&amp;Z proposed. I also provided the clean version of the document with the changes, as well as the changes in the track changes file. So, the P&amp;Z, basically, by a vote of four to zero, recommended approval of this request. So, now, we just want to know what the decision is by the city council. Like, do we go ahead and make these changes to the document? Or is more time needed to kind of go through the changes that have been proposed?
I just have a question, and I brought it up at the last meeting, too, but I didn't see it addressed in here. And that is that, you know, we've had some stutter steps with P&amp;Z, and all council is now committed that we want to give P&amp;Z direction so that we don't get a garbage ordinance again that they work a lot on and we end up saying no to. So, if we could, and I don't know the right mechanics, but if we could put something in here under number 23.4, under the duties and zoning responsibilities, it basically says the commission's just responsible for updating all the ordinances that apply to the comprehensive plan. But is there anywhere in here that we can say that P&amp;Z needs to present an agenda at the council meeting as to what they're gonna talk about at the next meeting? Or before they launch on a new topic, that they bring it before us to, you know, kind of like the Parks, the Parks ordinance?
Okay.
You know, bring it before us and are we gonna go move forward or not go forward? So, I don't know where that fits in here.
Could you say that? 23.4 duties and zoning responsibilities. And then you also, you repeat that, that they need to be there. And this is, as a minimum, you could say, as directed, or as directed, or as requested by the city council.
Okay.
And these functions and responsibilities.
I think it's as simple as that. If that will work for you guys.
Okay.
Ken?
There's one other thing I wanted to comment on. You call this all the way through, it's the commission, not the zoning commission or not the planning and zoning commission. So, when somebody calls City Hall and says, I want to request zoning change, who do I have to submit that to? They say, well, you submit it to the commission. Well, what commission is that? Well, it's the commission. Well, who's on first? I don't know, second base. It needs to be, it does not just need to be called the commission. It needs to be the zoning commission or the planning and zoning commission.
Right, they talked about that. And it was in the definitions that the commission was defined as the planning and zoning commission. So, they were trying to, correct me if I'm wrong, but they were trying to reduce the number of words in the ordinances. And so, they said, once it's defined, then that's the commission. And I'm not sure, I'm aware of any other commission that we have in the city. We've got committees, EDC's a corporation. This might be the only commission we have in the city. Can anybody else think of another one?
Board?
I understand what you're saying, but they did that intentionally to reduce the document. But you think it might be confusing?
Just my opinion.
You'd be a planning and zoning board. You want another word for it?
But I think you're referring to the words, planning and zoning, not either commission or board, but to specify planning and zoning or zoning.
What you're saying is that in a, something that you don't, in another portion of the ordinance that you don't have before you.
Right.
Says that all references to the commission are to the planning and zoning commission.
Right, and I think we approved those definitions a few meetings ago, right? You guys brought those definitions to us a few meetings ago, and we approved them. So, I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying they did that intentionally. I'm just saying they did that intentionally.
I'm having a hard time hearing that, too.
A simple, a simple change might be like Section twenty-three where it's just commission. If just at, you know, planning and zoning commission, then it would, then commission through the rest of the document, wouldn't be adding much verbiage. But you could still, it, it would easily be stated like right at the top, Section twenty-three, commission. Would be said planning and zoning commission on that spot. That clarify, and then parentheses, commission. I like that. So at the, the top of Section twenty-three and-
Right.
Do we have a shortage of words? We can't put planning and zoning commission every time?
They intentionally took it out. Um, that was their preference.
We get charged for using too many words.
It seemed big, yeah.
Why not clarify it and make it perfectly obvious? That's, there's no reason to shorten it and, and increase obscurity or confusion into it. Doesn't make sense.
I don't know, Ken, do you want to speak on it? I mean, I think you guys just thought it was redundant and-
The thing that we noticed is in Chapter ten, it defines commission. And it says, "Commission is planning and zoning commission." So since in Chapter fourteen, we had other words around commission, then we tried to shorten it to where commission was always stated, not necessarily referring back to Chapter ten, but in Chapter fourteen and Chapter ten, now they coincide with each other, as opposed to possibly some confusion on planning and zoning commission. That was our thought po- you know, thought process whenever we made all those adjustments.
Would a, just the title change, would that be a good compromise?
I mean, we'll, we'll go whichever way we want to go. I was just, you know, it, it gets confusing when you go in. Sometimes you see going, zoning commission, sometimes you see planning and zoning commission, sometimes you just see commission. And, uh, you know, to me, I like to keep things consistent, uh, throughout our documents. And, you know, when, when I saw that in Chapter ten, I was the one that made the changes. And I did it just trying to keep consistency in it. But I'm, I'm willing to go any way you want to go. We can put a lot more words in if you want to.
No good?
Yeah.
So, do you want to leave it?
Yeah.
You okay with that, too?
So I was actually looking at some of the language inside the actual document, too. Um, and this is, might be a little bit irrelevant, but I think it's concerning to me a little bit. So on twenty-four point three, and it talks about the two hundred foot or the twenty percent rule, so two hundred feet is not that lo- far away, guys. Like, literally, two hundred feet is probably that fence line. Um, so we probably need to adjust that to like a thousand feet, honestly. You think about, there's areas that are going to get developed, they're going to affect homeowners. They, they just are. And ultimately, while I want industry and I want things to grow and I, I, all that stuff, like, I love progress, I also want to protect our residents. And there's plenty of residents here that would be super upset if a grocery store got put in their backyard, right? I think everybody in here, someone dropped a grocery store in their backyard. So I, I think two hundred feet is just not far enough, in my opinion, but we can address that.
Mayor, may I?
Well, um, is that-
That might be a standardized thing, I, that might be a question for Neil.
Really, that's not on the agenda for tonight. We're discussing the commission deal, that's, needs to be addressed separately, I believe.
Okay.
Well, it's part of what we're addressing, it's Section twenty-three.
It's twenty-three.
Yeah, terminology, really, okay, we can stretch.
But, you know, the question is, is that just for notification of the property owners? Do they have public hearings? And then it also comes before council? Um, so if-
And, and, and honestly, that is like-
I, I was just going to say that a lot of, it's, it's, I think it's a state law, there's two hundred, two hundred feet, but some cities, uh, extended, some double it, so it's four hundred feet. So there's a little bit of extra there. Colleen is one that actually doubled it. Uh, it's not required, but it's something that they've adopted as a practice and seems to work. Uh, I don't know what the distance is, that's a council decision, but that's what some cities do to modify that, to make it to their liking. But they can't, they gotta at least meet that two hundred requirement.
For notifications.
For notifications, yes.
Because, I mean, think, like, I, and I'm going to use Morgan's Point Boulevard as an example, o- over by my house, all right? So there's two houses right there. Let's say across, that, this was a topic years ago, actually, across the street, they were trying to, to make that multi-use or make that into, uh, commercial. And all of the people up and down that street got notified in that newer subdivision and they were very upset. I don't know if anybody remembers that. Do you remember that? And, and, and so, I, I think, you know, they felt like people were, were blindsiding them, right? So we just want to be transparent.
Right.
You know, I think as a council, as a city, we want to be transparent, we want to be above board and we want people to respect us when it's all said and done on any decision that we make. That's my two cents.
Well, we're going to discuss that at the, uh, at a regular meeting, so I guess you can bring that up then and maybe we can make a change then.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I have a question, just for clarification. On page thirty-two, it says, "The City Secretary is going to publish the changes on the website with the help and guidance of Munich Code." Are we using Munich Code?
We are using Munich Code.
Okay.
Uh, we had a little glitch this weekend, but, uh, I don't know if it's because of the power outage or if it was that, or internet outage or not.
I wondered if it might be with guidance of, I, more of a generic name than Munich Code, in case we change provider-
It's not a bad idea.
So, just, I, I don't know what, what do you call that? The database or the, whatever, so.
Where's that?
On page thirty-two, number six, under, under the now there for. She said, I, I guess sometimes you get things done and then you, you don't want to do it again for a long time, so I try to catch that kind of stuff so it will still be accurate.
Good. Okay, going right on, going down to the discussion item twenty-five oh-nineteen, finish you and Mary?
Yes, Mayor, City Council.
Thank you, Sam, appreciate that.
Mayor, City Council, this is, discuss the preliminary unaudited, uh, consolidated monthly report for the period of October twenty-four through February twenty, uh, October twenty-four, uh, through February twenty-five. Um, if you'll think back, several months back, I informed you all that I was not, I had very low confidence in the financial information being provided to council. Um, after looking at closer, knowing what we know today, I'm certain that the financial information is neither, uh, neither lends itself to accountability or transparency. So, which neither is acceptable. Um, it took us a while to, to filter through some of the stuff and why we're, where we're at today. I'm going to give you a little bit more information, uh, but right now, you've got a budget versus actual. We'll talk about that here in just a second, but I want to let you know that the fiscal year budget was not actually properly loaded, uploaded into financial software. What was loaded up was, was, uh, not that the actual budget itself, and it did create some problems. So without that financial software receiving the actual budget you all adopted in September of twenty-four, it, the dependency was basically relied on ENCODE internally and Excel spreadsheets and what have you. Uh, in addition, uh, what we were finding out as well is, is our expenses were hitting the wrong accounts, um, or they were either under, uh, perhaps underfunded and/or no funding in that account that it was hitting, creating problems. And not recognizing revenues in the proper periods and not able to access financial reports. Uh, one of the most basic, uh, reports council should always want is your budget versus actual. Shows what you adopted and how staff is using those dollars, uh, throughout the course of the year. You should get it on a monthly basis. Unfortunately, um, without it being loaded up, that's not possible. We, we have since addressed that issue. But left unchecked, the city would not be able to depend on its end-of-year financial statements, uh, which is obviously something you cannot allow. And so, um, what we've done internally is we've done a fiscal twenty-five, if you will, fiscal year twenty, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five, um, financial reset. And what that boils down to is, is there's everything that's behind the scenes can be looked at. I, I introduced Mary a little bit ago and she'll have a chance to speak in a second. But basically, we're looking at everything from the accounts that were created, there's a thing called chart of accounts, and it's literally account for just about everything you can imagine, there's hundreds of them, a lot of times. Could be thousands, depends on what size agency you have. Uh, that's part of it. But when you've got things hitting, um, expenses are hitting, uh, accounts that don't have the funding, not enough funding, uh, that just tells you right now there's something off. What you've got before you is a monthly report that covers that period, October of twenty-four through, uh, February of twenty-five. You're going to see in there what we see, and that's the, that's the baseline I want everyone to be mindful of around this table, because that's a starting point. It wasn't the fact that we were wanting it perfect, you, there's no way to make this perfect at this stage. What we wanted to know is what's the baseline? What is the Fund View software telling us in a budget versus actual environment? Well, now we've got it. So you've got what I've got, and what our plan is moving forward is this. Well, first of all, recognize that this has been uploaded properly, and all the budget, uh, line items that we created during the budget process in fiscal year twenty-four for this particular budget that we're in, you all approved. That has been down to the dollar, verified independently from the software. Hence, Mary and Nida worked on that for several days to make sure that we had every dollar accounted for, and it's down to the dollar, so we know what's in there. Two is, uh, the budget versus actual report covers that period, but like I said, there's a lot of wrong with it. I'm going to just give you a few examples off the top of my head. We had, for example, in twenty twenty-four, there was a purchase of a police patrol unit that was purchased. Uh, well, in fact, it was ordered in twenty twenty-four but was not paid for in twenty, till twenty twenty-five. Well, what should have happened when those dollars were authorized in that budget is when you close out the year or, or whenever you, at this, toward the end of that fiscal year, you want to carry forward those dollars to the next period so there's funding available. Well, what happened, and you'll see it in here, there's an eighty thousand nine hundred draw on an account that's zero balance. Well, the reason it's zero balance is because we didn't move the money from one period to the next, carry forward. Um, another one, insurance proceeds, we got about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars from TML for the storm damage. A lot of that was vehicle repair for hail damage, about thirty thousand or so. Well, if you look in here, you'll see there's about a thirty thousand dollar, uh, charge to account, and, so we're already over budget, so to speak, but yet the money was not, not only recognized, but it wasn't aligned with that expense account that it should have been in. So there's lots of that going on that needs to be addressed. We are geared up internally to do that, but I didn't want any changes made until everybody around this table got a copy of it, and you can save this copy. So now, moving forward, when you see line item adjustments, or some people just call them budget adjustments, you'll see that come through. Those are done by department and that's done from my office. Anything that deals from budget, from, uh, department to department will be brought back to council for, for consideration and approval. Um, any kind of revenue expenses that need to be recognized, that's going to modify that budget beyond the, uh, original submission, as in like a budget amendments needed, that, or a carry forward, that will be brought to council. Those are ordinances, it's adopted one way, it has to be, uh, changed the same way, okay? So there's going to be some things happening, but I want you to see what we're all working from, so you've got a good, clear start. And every chance we get, hopefully, on the twenty-fourth, if we can pull it off, we want another meeting so we can start recognizing some revenues, you'll start seeing the internal processes begin, and, uh, I think that's very, very important. To, to you to track it and so you'll know exactly, when you see a monthly report coming up, which from now on, you'll see one, but you'll also see it improve from this baseline. But we had to know where we were at, and it's clearly something that, uh, it's going to take a while to work out, but it's going to set us up for, I think, where we need to be. I'm, uh, let, uh, Mary introduce herself, and then she'll give you some more information and then we'll go ahead and close this out and, uh, we know where we're moving forward.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Uh, Your Honor, Mayor, City Council and City Woman, City Councilwoman. Uh, my name is Mary Tolman and I'm the new Finance Director, and I'm very happy and very proud to be here, uh, become part of this community. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to, uh, get started with is first thank the staff, um, that I'm working with. Um, they've been holding the city together, um, under the leadership of, of Dennis, and I think that there is work to do, but I'm sure working together as a team, we can, we can get it done, hopefully sooner rather than later, uh, because change sometimes can be a little, uh, it takes time, ti- you know, change is going to take time. Uh, so I did want you to, uh, see, I think you're all familiar with this report, it's the bank statement as of today, what is in the bank. Please keep in mind that although we have, uh, all those assets there, we do have a lot of fixed costs and eighty percent of your budget is roughly salaries, and we're halfway through the year. So although you think, "Oh, we have all this money," uh, no, we don't. Okay? Um, of course, we all, we have other projects. Uh, we will be going through this report with a fine-tooth comb, um, that is in Fund View. And I also want to thank, uh, Nadia for helping me with this, uh, because we, like we said, we were in the library, we were off by a dollar and, man, we found that dollar and I was like, "Lunch, let's celebrate." Uh, because if anybody knows balancing, you're looking for that one dollar amongst, you know, everything was, was a challenge and I was super excited. Um, so if you have any questions, I'm here, um, and I'll be here after the meeting in case you have anything else you, you would like to address.
Glad you're here, we need you.
Okay.
Thank you very much and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, move right along. Sam, I think you're the last one on the agenda on ADA.
So, um, this one, we kind of had a discussion with the P and Z, and I think for now, we need, we just need direction from the City Council, um, on where to add the ADA requirements and was the rules or regulation, um, should we be adding it as a separate appendix to the ordinance codes, or should it be added to as part of the ordinances? So we take a look at the different sections, um, and then start incorporating language on ADA compliance. Um, so I think we just kind of need that direction so we can make those changes and then present it, um, to the City Council for further consideration. Um, I've shared in my references, um, a few of the websites that have good information, um, so we can look at the state regulation, the federal regulation, as well as the, um, city, uh, cities that are incorporating languages on ADA complacency. So, um, uh, as an example, I think we would need to consider if we want to incorporate it within the parking lot section, um, housing, digital platform, so we have the whole document as a separate PDF on the website, or public accommodation, um, so we would need to kind of consider all of these things in order to incorporate ADA requirements. So the City of Belton, um, for example, has a Chapter eleven under licenses and, um, business regulations, Article seven, boarding homes, Division two administrative, so they have language on ADA complacency only within this section. Um, the City of Colleen, um, has, again, just one section, which is criteria for park development, and they have ADA language within that section. So I think we're just looking for guidance if we want to kind of completely overhaul and include ADA within the whole ordinances or as a separate appendix document, um, and also include it on the website.
I would guess I would ask how many sections of the ordinances need to have language on ADA? Because it seems to me that it would be a lot easier just to put it in the sections that it relates to-
Okay.
-as opposed to an appendix or, you know, an add-on.
Right, right.
Is there, like, a lot, is it overwhelming that-
Um, so I can always work on the, the ordinances and figure out, like, propose, we can propose, um, the sections where language can be incorporated and also kind of include example language for the City Council to kind of consider. I think the few examples that I kind of found out were parking lots, uh, park development, um, housing, um, and public accommodation. I think these were the major ones. Um, and we can incorporate those within the sections or other sections that we think it would be appropriate, and then present it to the City Council for-
Right.
And we can incorporate those within the sections, or other sections that we think it would be appropriate, and then present it to the city council for.
Right. Is it for the residents, so that they understand how we are complying? Is it a how-to, rather than by omission, we're doing it? Well, right now, we're not doing it, I know. We're not complying with ADA, especially our parks, right?
I think there's a lot of facilities, this thing right here, the one we're in now, was going to be used during FEMA, and they, it wasn't meeting their standards, so they, they chose to go elsewhere. They came back and worked out of the back of a truck. I don't know what that proved, but that's what they did. Yeah, that's what it was.
Is it? Yeah. Sam?
So, for that, I think my only, I think the discussion point was to consider the different sections because, and this is just from my previous experience of working in Florida, where a lot of the different cities kind of incorporate ADA language within the, within the ordinances differently. So, just to kind of make sure that the city council kind of agrees of it being just a separate document, where we just mentioned ADA compliance as a general provision? Or is it going to be part of the different sections as well as an add-on? That, that's the only question I think we had. But we're, we're happy to kind of incorporate it any way the city council kind of thinks appropriate.
I'm, we have to, we could overlook one accidentally, or, so if you just made one addendum at the end, then that would apply to any ADA ordinance?
Right, right. So, basically, we look at a general, more overarching section, where it kind of clarifies that all of the, the, the regulations stated by ADA must be followed within the ordinances. So, more of this language would be appropriate.
If you don't have an option, it's a given, but you could put one sentence in there, we will abide by ADA rules.
Okay.
Pretty simple. Unless there's, I mean?
My only question is, what does that look like? What does that look like for this building? What does it look like for public safety? What does it look like for, you know, city facilities? I know, but? How will we make sure it's implemented?
Hire an ADA administrator.
And pay for it, yeah. I mean, I think by just doing it by default, we still won't get it done.
Well, and it's so, it's so expensive. Well, I know the city I work for, civil rights division came down and just did an audit. They walked through everything, and, and they just entered to a consent and agreement, if you will, with the city to address the issues, but it's, it's not cheap. I'm talking mega bucks, millions and millions of dollars for it. Depends, because it's not only just about the buildings, but there's other things, like you said, recreation-wise, given access, sidewalks, there's just so many different things. So, I think it's something that you can start addressing, at least know where you want to go, but ultimately, it's going to be, I just don't see any city meeting the challenge of, of addressing ADA properly, because of the, the amount of monies involved. I just don't see them doing it. I know Colleen didn't do it until this consent decree came through, and they've got a path forward now. But it kept them out of court by just accepting that and moving forward.
Should we come up with a list of those areas that you think we need to address ADA compliance?
Yeah, yeah.
We can look at a list and?
It's certainly something on long-term planning we should have in our planning sessions, like we had this a couple of weeks ago. That, that way, you can start looking at, start chipping away at certain aspects of it. Because obviously, there's a need.
And it's an important need, too.
We'll still need to move along here, because we've got a deadline here, so.
So, are we giving you enough guidance?
Yeah, so, and just, I think so for now, my takeaway is that I will be looking at the different sections within the ordinance codes that would be appropriate for ADA language. And then I can come up with some examples for you all to consider at the next city council.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir, just a quick, yes, sir, this will be less than a minute. We have two agreements here before you. One is, both of them deal with ETJ. The law, it's chapter 242 of the local government code, requires that not only platting and cannot do it, regulate the ETJ, and then we're going for us to make a decision and to move forward. As you're, we have to enter into agreement, and they're asking, it's still going to be an RTGA. Not that we want to maintain the maintenance, but it's going to be something the council decision.